Good afternoon, everyone. It is December 10, 2024. It's 1:00 P. M. This is the City of Prescott City Council Study Session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi. Oh, he's not here yet. I'll note when he arrives. Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruizeng.
Here.
Very good. We have one item on our discussion agenda today. Presentation and discussion regarding the draft long-term water management plan. Mr. Ruiz, I would expect that you're probably going to be presenting.
Well, I'm going to start off with a little introduction, then I'm going to pass it over to the people who've been working really hard on this plan. So, hi, I'm Brian Reese. I'm the Water Resources and Environmental Services Manager here for the City of Prescott, Department of Public Works. And yeah, so I wanted to start off, I'm going to do a little brief introduction of the people who will be giving you most of this presentation today on the long-term water management plan outline, where we're at, and try to get some feedback on to you, from you, so that we can move this project forward. So, we're very happy today to have Herb Dishleep. He's longtime water consultant for the City of Prescott. He's helped us out in some of our most challenging water problems, issues, over a course of a long time. So Herb's gonna, is gonna come up and, and start off today, and then he's going to pass it over to Leslie Grazer, Water Resources Manager for the City of Prescott. You all know Leslie, very, very knowledgeable of all the water issues, and she's going to take you through the concepts that we want to present to you today on this. So, I just wanted to start off by saying, you know, that the concepts and discussions around a long-term water management plan, I've been hearing about them ever since I got here almost two years ago. And I'm extremely excited that we're starting, starting this project, which is tremendously important to the city. Over the last few months, we've started to make some, get some steam built up on this project, through the application for a grant, reviewing other plans by other municipalities in our area, reviewing of technical documents, looking at the, incorporating the goals of the general plan, and incorporating the goals of this council's strategic plan as we've moved along. Leslie and Herb are going to talk to you about all of that today. But as you are listening to their presentation, one of the things that we want you to understand is that what we would like to accomplish, as we give you an idea of what the breadth and the scope of this plan could undertake, is to get your feedback on this plan. What's important to you on this plan? What do you want to accomplish from it? So that we can take that and incorporate it into the, into the vision for, or incorporate it into the principal goals that we're going to use to establish the plan. When we do that, we'll be able to create a vision for the plan, we'll be able to establish goals and strategies, and then take those to actions that will align with this council's interest. So, this will probably be the first of many meetings that will come to you on this, to give you an idea of the progress we're making, and also get more insight from you. But this meeting is a very important one, because this is the one where we can make sure that we're starting off on the right track, so we can get this plan moving in the right direction right out of the gate. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and, and turn it over to Herb, and we'll get started.
How do you turn the slides? Yes, so, just push it.
Yep, right here. I think that will take you.
Yeah, I only have this one slide.
Yep.
Oh. Here, that's good.
Right there?
Yep, thank you.
Mayor and Council, my name's Herb Dishleep. I'm a civil engineer, water resources consultant. I spent many, many years in water planning for the Bureau of Reclamation, for the Arizona Department of Water Resources, where I spent most of my career, and as a consultant for many other cities, towns, water companies, and irrigation districts. And I just want to, first of all, congratulate you for taking on this plan. A lot of my clients and people I've worked with over the years, they always talked about doing a plan. They always said we're going to do a plan, but they never did the plan. And, and here in Prescott, we've been building up to this with the Water Resources Management Model that we built. It's really a tool to do the kind of planning that needs to be done. And this is a very important next step, and so I do want to congratulate you on taking this on. When we start a plan, planning process, you have to develop, well, what is it we're going to do? What are we going to talk about? And what we call here is scoping the plan. Yeah, we, today we have an outline, and we have discussions of what we think the content should be. But, but what a lot of plans fail to do at the beginning is put parameters around, well, what are we trying to accomplish with this plan? And what we find is that the water world is very complicated. It's interconnected between federal laws, state laws, county zoning problems, issues, and you tend to get lost sometimes in trying to do things that you really can't do, that it's somebody else's responsibility. For example, I'll give you the AMA Management Plan. There are things in the AMA Management Plan that affect the city. And in this planning process, we could go into it and say, well, if the management plan didn't say what it did, we would do this. But it's important to keep in mind that that's somebody else's jurisdiction, somebody else's plan, somebody else's responsibility. And while we certainly can have opinions and try to influence their judgments on how to develop their plans, or their regulations, whether it's Clean Water Act, whether it's water conservation requirements, whatever it is, we can have our opinions. But our plan has to be something we can implement as the city. And when I talk about "we" as the city, I'm talking about the mayor and council through their administrative, police powers and action that they can take through ordinance and adoption of policies, through the administration of how they administer and operate reservoirs, things like that. And ultimately, even the citizens, where we might have to go to a vote of, for a bond election, or a vote under Prop 4, what was it, 409 or something like that, whatever it is, there's things that we, as the City of Prescott, can influence and make happen. There's other things we can't make happen. And those things that we can't make happen, we kind of need to narrow our plan to things that we can make happen. And in that regard, we're clearly not starting from scratch. We've got legal obligations, we've got contracts, we've got all kinds of current requirements. And we can't develop a plan that would abrogate a legal obligation we have. We have agreements with the tribe, we have agreements with Chino Valley Irrigation District, we have agreements with developers that we've made, we have other development agreements when we passed the bond election to purchase the lakes. There's things that maybe you could review, except you can't review them, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, in a way that makes you review and rethink legally binding contracts. You don't want to come out of this with a plan that ends up being, you end up being sued. So, again, you narrow your, your perspective to things that won't change current contracts or current agreements, and keep that kind of in your pocket, is that's our base case. The second thing you have to scope is you can't do things that even if they're a good idea, would be breaking the law. So you can't presume that if we could change the statute and do something different in the statute, then we would have a different plan than what we would do otherwise. Statutes are set by the state legislature, and certainly we could influence the legislature to change the law. But as we do a plan, we have to be in the parameters of what's legal, and what are we bound to legally? And, and in that regard, we're also bound to, since we are a water provider in an active management area, and a designated water provider under the groundwater code, we have certain things we've agreed to do by applying for them, or through the regulatory authority of the state through the management plan, that we need to comply with. Now, many times, those requirements give you options. You can do this, you can do this. There's not, there's flexibility in a lot of statutes and rules and management plans. And I think it's fair to say that this plan should, where you've been given an option, be on the table to consider, what if we do things differently and still comply with the law? But you can't enter into a discussion, in my opinion, that would take you in a direction that requires a change in the law, or clearly is in violation of the law. And so, those become kind of scoping parameters. And then the last thing is, when you, when you talk about what's on the table for discussion, and that's kind of different, a little different from scoping, but it's, it's really what is fair game to talk about. In most planning processes, you don't want to take much off the table. You want to have a wide, open discussion. You wanted to have a discussion that, anything that the city has jurisdiction over, control over, ordinances, policies, and if you want to take them in a different direction, that should be probably fair game for discussion. Because the city can implement those changes, they can do something if you develop a plan. And so those things are fair game. Another thing that's fair game is, how do you operate the water system? We have a certain way we operate our wells, we have a certain way we operate our recharge projects, where we locate our recharge projects, where we, how we file our annual reports, how much we say is groundwater being pumped, how much we say is recovered effluent, how we manage our surface water. All of these things are things that are fair game for being on the table. And I encourage that we keep this plan open to that kind of a discussion. So, when we look generally at scoping, a lot of plans get scoped based on timeframe and budget. Well, I only got this much money, and I only have this much time, therefore that's the scope of the study. Those are important things, you can't just ignore them. But beyond that, I urge that as we develop this plan, we take into consideration some of those factors I've tried to lay out, that this is a city plan, and it's things that the city and its customers have to buy into, and it's the city's flexibility to adopt the plan, to modify the plan, to not adopt the plan. As I was just thinking about things that, you know, we don't have a document that's a water plan, but we clearly have a water plan in place. We've got all these facilities, all these decisions have been made over the years. They were done a little bit piecemeal, but when you put them all together, you have an amazing starting place for a water plan. And so what we're looking at, how can we make the water system for the future more responsive to what the needs are going to be of the city in the future? More economical, good for our customers, good for our citizens? That's what the goal of the, of the scope should be, and without any idea of judgment of what the answer is, because that's the purpose of the plan. So those are my comments on scoping, and I'd like to turn it over to Leslie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Leslie Grazer, and I already had a very kind introduction, so thank you, Brian, and I'll move you through some slides fairly quickly, because you had information in your packet, and you probably had a, hopefully a little chance to go through the PowerPoint already, so we won't focus too long on the slides. But we do need to do the background real quick. So as you recall, there was a mayor's commission for water policy review and monitoring. Not only did they work on amending that 2022 policy, they also had three recommendations. One of them was a long-term management plan. So as soon as we got through that, we did see the opportunity for a grant, so we ran after that one. And thankfully, it was, it was nice that we were awarded that as a city, to kick off this plan and set some timeframes to this work. Next came along the council's strategic plan, and you have a pretty clear statement at the very top about what you were looking to do. You wanted to have some focus on the infrastructure and other information there as well. You had a couple steps in there that you wanted to have an outline by a certain time, and then a plan by June or July, I think it was July of 2027. Moving forward, the general plan was also in motion. And the general plan, we wrote in strategies to continue that thought process, as you probably read in your memo. In 2015, you already had the need for a long-term management plan, but we knew as staff that you needed to have a tool. You needed to have your data all in one place, and you had to be able to run scenarios potentially. So that's why we did the build on that. It was meant to be twofold, because we liked to get our money's worth, and we knew there was a DNO application that, a modification that was going to have to occur. So, in writing for the 2025 plan, we made sure the long-term management plan was back in there, and linked it pretty tightly to state requirements, basically what Herb was mentioning in part, about what's on and off the table. You need to make sure you have those linkages in place. So here we are at the draft outline. This is what I prepared in order to get the grant. So this was in motion quite a few months ago, so that we, well, yeah, quite, quite a few months ago. I'll just read the headings, and then if there's questions along the way, we definitely would appreciate thoughts, if there's something else that should be in there. This isn't, this is considered draft, so within our grant process, we do have until February to work on this a little bit more and really tailor it to the city. So of course, there'll be an introduction with your typical introductory, introductory information. Water supplies, no, no comments there, really. Water demands, you'll have those. And then we'll start, where the bulk of the work is going to happen, is the supply and demand management strategies. So, backing up once again, thinking ahead, we were fairly careful about this. We already have a decision in order underway, we already had to compile supplies and demands. Went the wrong way on the slide. Let me see if I can back up. Sorry about that, that would get confusing. Okay, so let's go back to here. So, supplies, we have most of those already figured out. Stormwater would be something new that we'll have to discuss in more detail. Demands, again, DNO is in place, we filed information, we've gathered everything and compiled it. And that, once again, leads us back to the supply and demand strategy. So that's where the, I think the bulk of your work is going to occur. And then the community engagements, we wrote that into the grant, it was very important. We weren't quite sure what the depth of that, or the range would be, how intensive that would be. But we also picked up on, as you can see, within your strategic plan, anything in green, I tried to add in that after the fact. So you were also very interested in how you made partnerships with other communities. We're not certain today, and we'll be asking that a little bit more, as, you know, how, do you want to get your plan in place first, and then start working regional? Or did you really want to have a regional discussion feeding into your plan? And so there can be greater timetables potentially with that. And the last piece is implementation. So, you know, do you want to be looking at, looking at updating this every five years, 10 years? What things are going to change on you along the way that you want to be able to adapt to? Is there a reporting out piece? And then is there any capital improvements that might fall out? So, that's a real quick run through the outline, and I'll just keep moving so we can get to some of the discussion pieces that Brian had mentioned that I built into this PowerPoint today. So, what we have in front of us is, I looked at this, and I'm like, well, we have three different guiding documents on how to get, or you know, this project done. So we need to stitch them together, and they have different timelines. I think the, you know, the most detailed timeline at this point was the one I put together for the grant. So right now, we have just these different steps and, and kind of due dates already in place. It doesn't mean that we can't modify those. The second one is the strategic, excuse me, the strategic plan. So it's pretty much, the way it's written right now is just a long timeline that says be done by July 2027. There's no markers in particular in there, but I think what your markers may be is that we would recommend some workshops, or more study sessions for the council, or maybe small work groups by the city manager, to keep us working towards timely completion of these things. And the last one is the general plan timeline. And I wasn't quite sure what the implementation timeframe would be on that one, but in discussing this a little bit with community development, they said, basically what we'll be doing is tracking goals, so we'll be reporting out to the general plan implementation piece, that we reached a certain marker on those different strategies that are within the general plan. I hope I'm not running through this too quickly, but now we get to the team, so we felt this was important. You know, it's the who's on, you know, who is it, and, and what are their responsibilities? So we're still discussing this a little bit, but I think this is a fairly straightforward slide. So, on the consulting team, we wrote into the grant that we'd have a specialized lead, and that's Mr. Dishleep. We'll probably have to kick out a few times here and there, maybe for outside legal interpretation, but we would really like to keep that in-house, so that's why you see them in the center column. The hydrologic modeling, we think we might have to test some of our thoughts against the aquifer itself, and then report production as well. City staff, you can see the, the list there, that's not all-inclusive, we just knew that that was probably the starter team. Where everybody sits, you know, on this adventure, you know, we don't have that entirely mapped out, but it appears that, of course, Public Works is the lead right now. But in my years working for the city, the communication had to be among all the departments, because we can't, we rather not guess. We'd rather talk to the fire department and know what, what, what's going on in that venue. We'd like to talk to your economic development team, so we know what, what are they hoping to bring in, so we can make sure we provide for those ideas. And of course, community development, which, which direction are things going to go, potentially? And of course, they never go the way you want them, you just have to keep them inside some guardrails, like I've mentioned before. Of course, mayor and council are critical in this, this adventure we're going to take. And then I put in just a different color, so that you knew they weren't right in there, but we're going to rely a lot on city customers, public. We need their feedback, you know, what, what makes sense to them in the long term. Put the regional partners in there, as well as other stakeholders. So, I hope I ran through that fairly quickly. We wanted to get to some questions, and we put these in your packet as well. So, we wanted to start with, what kind of planning horizon is a city seeking? We've looked at some different documents, like Brian has mentioned, I've pulled quite a few over the years, and then narrowed them down more recently. But what we're proposing is a 10-year for the near term, so see what we, happens in the near term, and then run our scenarios out at least 50 years. If you wanted to have a, another example, Tucson Water is going to 2,100 in their planning. They, their, their plan was put together, it took four years, and a whole lot of consultants. We're a little bit different size than Tucson. They also had a lot of support documents already in place, because they'd done a plan previously, previously. So we're setting the foundation right now. So I'll just pause there and see if there was any feedback.
Well, I know as we proceed with our decision and order, that's generally looked at as about a 10-year approval process, and then some of our infrastructure requirements are going to take much, much longer to be able to plan and finance, et cetera. So I think probably 50 years is a inappropriate long-term timeline, although we probably want to benchmark maybe a, a 25-year pause to see how our first 25 performed, and then do maybe a course correction as we head towards the next 25. Councilman Gambogi?
Your proposal for 10 years and 50 years works for me.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with Ted. I think 10 and 50 years make sense. The only thing I would add is that I think it's maybe a, a long-term stretch goal to start thinking, given that we have a 100-year assured water supply, that we start thinking in that length of time, eventually, but I think that's a tall order to ask out of the gate. So I think this makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think if we do kind of a 25-year benchmark, and a lot of the structure of this plan has been designed and put into effect, then at that time, we might consider maybe an extension into that longer-term period. Councilwoman Freworth?
Thank you, Mayor. That was actually where I was thinking, in terms of really focusing on the 25-year, 10 and 25-year. Originally, I thought, why not 100, for the exact reason of the assured water supply, but honestly, in terms of how we think about capital planning, I just don't think we're that good to go out 50 to 100 years. So, I know with what we're going to need, we're going to need to do some big projects, and knowing which ones we're going to take in the first 10 years, and which ones we're going to take in the second 10 years, I think is critical to our success as a city. So that was my input. The only other thing that you ran through some slides, and I was kind of like, we didn't say that, we didn't say that. We, when we go to our strategic plan, we just outlined the results we wanted. I think you're referring, as I'm looking at some of the documents that are embedded in this, these are plans that, that Gwen and others developed to get to our answer of, we said, this is what we want, and staff came back and told us the date. So we said we wanted by fiscal year 28, is what we approved in June, through the development of a long-term water management plan that includes a focus on infrastructure, distribution, delivery, conservation, and safety. Through all of those things, in fiscal year 28, the community will experience safe, potable water within the water service area boundary. And so, you know, we want to be operationalizing something by fiscal year 28. So, look at the, you know, the Well, I know as we proceed with our decision in order, that's generally looked at as about a 10-year approval process. And then some of our infrastructure requirements are going to take much, much longer to be able to plan and finance, et cetera. So I think probably 50 years is an appropriate long-term timeline, although we probably want to benchmark maybe a 25-year pause to see how our first 25 performed, and then do maybe a course correction as we head towards the next 25. Councilman Gambogi?
Your proposal for 10 years and 50 years works for me.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with Ted. I think 10 and 50 years make sense. The only thing I would add is that I think it's maybe a long-term stretch goal to start thinking, given that we have a 100-year assured water supply, that we start thinking in that length of time eventually, but I think that's a tall order to ask out of the gate. So I think this makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think if we do kind of a 25-year benchmark, and a lot of the structure of this plan has been designed and put into effect, then at that time, we might consider maybe an extension into that longer-term period. Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. That was actually where I was thinking in terms of really focusing on the 25-year, 10 and 25-year. Originally, I thought, why not 100 for the exact reason of the assured water supply? But honestly, in terms of how we think about capital planning, I just don't think we're that good to go out 50 to 100 years. So I know with what we're going to need, we're going to need to do some big projects, and knowing which ones we're going to take in the first 10 years and which ones we're going to take in the second 10 years, I think is critical to our success as a city. So that was my input. The only other thing that you ran through some slides, and I was kind of like, we didn't say that, we didn't say that. When we go to our strategic plan, we just outlined the results we wanted. I think you're referring, as I'm looking at some of the documents that are embedded in this, these are plans that, that Gwen and others developed to get to our answer of, we said, this is what we want, and staff came back and told us the date. So we said we wanted by fiscal year 28 is what we approved in June. Through the development of a long-term water management plan, that includes a focus on infrastructure, distribution, delivery, conservation, and safety. Through all of those things, in fiscal year 28, the community will experience safe potable water within the water service area boundary. And so, you know, we want to be operationalizing something by fiscal year 28. So look at the, you know, the dates as you get up here. Like, I don't know that us approving something in July of '27 is going to give us the runway that the experience, the community will experience something in fiscal year 28. Maybe it will and maybe it won't, but I want to, I don't want you feeling confined as you proceed in this, this planning path, that, that we just wanted to make sure that the community's going to experience by fiscal year 28. And how you get there, I would unleash the handcuffs that you have been articulating through your presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruthing?
Thank you. In order to be a well-planned, well-managed, sustainable community, we need to have a long-term water plan, water management plan, and it has to be realistic. So I'm, I agree, I think the 10-year, 25-year benchmark, 50-year is a lot more realistic than trying to look forward 100 years.
Okay. Would you like me to proceed to the next question? Okay, we'll keep moving. And I think it's important, I think what we're going to be doing is building you stair steps towards your goal. You won't have a long-term management plan that solves everything for you, and you should be going back to it at a regular basis. The other three, with the other three documents that I was pointing out, we're doing our best to put those all together for you. So you have good thinking in all three, and I don't think there's anything that's hindering us. It's just that I wanted to make sure that, you know, you heard, you're seeing what you requested in different documents. And I have a sneaky feeling you'll be going back and doing more strategic planning in the future. You won't just stop, you know, because you have a 2025 to 2029. You'll be doing more. So moving on to the next question, we just wanted to touch on this a little bit. What's the expected planning boundary? So our proposal, and, you know, we're pretty confident about this, is, you know, of course, it's going to be city limits plus your city service area plus potentially your general plan boundary. And what that looks like is this. So your city limits is that orange kind of color. The blue outline shows your service up in Tchino Valley and around the city, outside the city limits in some cases, too. And then the red boundary is the general plan boundary from 2015. So we're checking in with our community development group as they're working on the general plan and seeing if any of these boundaries are changing. As I said, we're trying to align everything the best we can, and that extends to the water and wastewater model that was updated. It's a 2023 water and wastewater model. So this is your infrastructure side now. That work, they did their work to the general plan boundary and to the service area as well. So we're going to watch that. Let me back up here. What we're curious about is add-ins. Sometimes you get that. So are we going, would you expect us to do some kind of additional things such as, we have some private water companies that are within our area? Should we be looking at, are those going to be in the future acquired? Or is there going to be a situation where we're asked to serve those populations? You've had examples of that before. Town of Tchino Valley, even though there's a water service area already up there, you also entered into a corridor agreement to serve their entire commercial corridor. But you can look at Tchino Valley and their incorporated boundary is pretty big. So if that is of interest or if that's part of discussions that you're having now of how much you serve beyond what you serve now, that would be helpful to discuss. And then we can build from the beginning, the area versus having to keep adding on different things. The other example would be where people are using wells just outside of our service area, and they're no longer viable for whatever reason. We've seen that in the past where the city, you're just good neighbors, and you've been able thankfully to pick up subdivisions or smaller areas when there's been the need for whatever reason it might be, whether it's production issues or it's quality issues. So I think that's worth spending some time on. We don't have to have an answer today, but it would be helpful for this work to know if you generally like the proposal, and then tell us a little bit about any add-ins that you might see coming down the road.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. Because we're so close to a 2025 general plan, you know, eventually getting, I would like you to, you know, make sure that you're attuned to what is going forward, and it will be evolving over the course of the next few months. But when it goes forward to the public, I don't want you hung up on the 2015 general plan. That would be-
We definitely aren't. I've been, as I said, mentioning that, you know, we need to know the boundary. What's the 2025 boundary?
So that's, I would, I, it's, we don't have an answer definitive for you today until the voters approve it, but when the voters approve it in 2025, hopefully, then you'll have your definitive answer. But you can already start seeing what's, what the committee is developing, so-
Yes, ma'am.
So I would just change 2015 to 2025 is my suggestion.
Right. I'm sorry if that didn't come through. So it's just the general plan boundary, what I'm looking for. I gave you an example of what it is now for 2015, but absolutely, we're looking at 2025. And I haven't seen anything produced within the general plan yet that shows the actual boundary. There's just discussions at this point.
Well, I'd certainly like to see the city service area included. I know for many years, Tchino Valley, there was a certain amount of tension between Tchino Valley and Prescott because they claimed that we controlled their future because of our assured water supply status. And then when we decided to go ahead and deliver water to their commercial corridor, I think that made a big improvement in that relationship. But we need to make sure that we continue to have discussions and align our future plans along with theirs so that we don't backtrack into that kind of antagonistic, I'm not sure if that's the best word, but at least-
Right. Can't we be neighbors?
Yeah, change the tension level.
Yeah.
So I think that's important. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie, when you're crafting this plan, will you be taking into effect potential annexations and growth in the city? And at least a review period, because I worry if we get too far out, we'll have no opportunities. You know, 50 years, we're going to have a lot of changes in 50 years. I mean, I know our boundaries are what they are now, but even today, we're talking about different annexations. So how does that work?
I think it's that step stair, or the stairway idea is stepping you up along the way. So we'll have to just keep watching it. Just because this is going to be built to 50 years, the city shouldn't be just waiting for that 25-year mark. They shouldn't be just waiting for that 10-year mark. They should be looking at what's happening along the way. In terms of annexations, I guess that goes back to the general plan. If, if we have, and that's why community development, you know, as I said, in the past, I worked with a lot of different departments so we could see the whole range of what the city was heading, where it was trying to head. So we'll heap tabs on where the annexations are going to be. It's going to be hopefully within the general plan boundary that we receive, that, you know, if you want us to work towards a general plan boundary, that means that there's a potential for them to be annexed or served in one way or another.
So are you currently thinking a review of, what, every 10 years or five years?
We haven't set a timeframe. It seems that five might be a really good plan. So if the staff rotates as we bring new people on, people leave, then they know that they're, should be looking towards, you know, not at the five-year mark, but at least at the four-year mark. They need to be gearing up to review this and see if there's anything that should be changed or addressed, brought to you as a council, and say, well, boy, that didn't pan out. This happened instead. You know, let's talk about our long-term management plan and re-guide it because that's our new reality.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think once we have a plan drafted and agreed on, then we probably should be monitoring the performance at least annually, maybe even semi-annually, to be able to see how we're doing. It's always great to be able to course correct when we realize maybe we're slightly off track and heading maybe in the wrong direction, or if things develop, whether it's more development agreements or more annexations that would modify our plan. I think it's important to be able to have that review, not only for ourselves and staff, but for the public at large, too.
Right. And then that would tie in well as, you know, to your infrastructure, water and wastewater models. It might tie into some other things. I've tried, as I said, I've been trying to align things so we don't have a scatter that we have. So we're not hindered by anything so far. It's just I'm trying to reduce the scatter and make sure that we can complete things in a, in a logical manner. Did, would you like to move from boundary? I think you gave me some good information, which I really appreciate. Okay, number three, should demand management goal include extending further your current supplies to reduce capital outlay for additional supplies? So that means, you know, are you going to try to hold steady and just continue to drive your conservation program harder so that you bring your gallons per capita down, and then you don't need to bring in additional supplies in the future? That's one way we can look at that. Lowering your GPCD further than the ADWR requirements. So do you want to go above and beyond what you're required on a regulatory front? The other one is addressing aquifer overdraft according to or beyond ADWR requirements. So demand management, and we don't want to put this all on the customer by any means, but predominantly, that's where your demand management occurs, is from, on your customer's side. We'll also be looking at the city's side, how we reduce our lost and unaccounted-for water that we have, either by line breakages or things like that. But let's focus this, pointing to this really points to your customer's side. And what, and we would have to, I would recommend, we would have workshops with your customers to find out, are they interested in driving the GPCD down? Do they want to use less water? And how, how would they do that? So any thoughts you might have?
Well, I think we have a pretty good understanding that capital outlays for additional supplies are going to be quite substantial. So if and when we come up with a financial plan on how to bring in outside or additional supplies, then we definitely need to extend current supplies as much as we can. I think there's a, there's quite a amount of lowering of GPCD that we could achieve. And I'm really excited about the smart meters that we're in the process of installing throughout the city. I know right now, I think we have funding for only about a third of our total customer base. But I think once those are put into place and people start getting comfortable with being able to monitor their own use, and as we, as they start seeing the impact of tiered water rates, I think there's going to be a lot of people that are going to start looking at that and figuring out ways to lower their use. And with that, then we'll achieve our goals in that Section A. And of course, the aquifer overdraft, we have a number, number of special groups in the area that are extremely concerned about that. I think rightly so. So if we can come up with adequate plans to be able to reduce the overdraft, maybe get it to the point where it's stable, and it'd be wonderful if we could reverse it, but that's a, that's a heavy, heavy lift.
It is a heavy lift, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about, like, you know, we have a, we have a good conservation program here. We're all proud of it. And I know Tracy's going to be taking it to even higher and higher levels. Demand management takes it kind of to a whole different level, where you're looking at strategically, you're using your data and you're using your analysis, and you are figuring out exactly where your most strategic demand reductions can be on an economic basis. And that's something we don't do right now. You know, it's something that a plan could look at so that we could implement in. And this is giving into heavy-duty demand management practices. Give you an example, Southern Nevada Water Association over in Las Vegas. Las Vegas has, they get their water from Lake Mead, 90% of it. And they don't have very many other alternatives. So they figured out a long time ago, they're going to be really heavy on demand management. So they have 81 conservation people in their department so that they can do a huge variety of demand, of analysis and evaluations, and determine where they can get their best buck for every drop of water they save. So what we're talking about here a little bit is about where do we want to lie in that curve of rebate programs, messaging that goes out to the community so we can get people to understand water savings, all the way up to very, very strategic goals of targeting and doing all the analysis needed in order to make sure that we're, we're saving everything we can. So that's kind of the spectrum, and if we could get your, get a kind of an idea from you, where do you think we need to lie on that? That gives us an idea of where we want, what we can do to get that plan to align with it.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
When I buttoned on, I didn't have all of that. So let me, let me just first react to, you know, yes, I think we need to extend further our current supplies. And I think when people come to this town from other places, you know, they, they start the journey of education and conservation. And so I think there's more we can do all the time. I'm always amazed running around town, seeing something for five years with a lawn, and all of a sudden, one night, the lawn is gone. And I'm like, oh, good, did someone get to them? Or did the tiered rate structure finally get to them? I would like both to have gotten to them and earlier. So, so do we have the wherewithal to have 90-something people? Heck, no. But, but I do think, you know, if we need to be strategic, and where I was going to say where I really like to be strategic is on our commercial and economic development area. I, you know, it's a huge portion of our plan in the coming year. It's the, if we do it right, it's the gift that keeps on giving financially. And so, so making sure we're bringing in the right companies, making sure we're helping those companies, you know, get their footprints and their operations structured correctly the first time, when they build it the first time. Those are the kind of things that I want to make sure that are a big focus area. And then finally, for me, you know, how far do we go? You know, I do think that there's a quality of life that our general city population does support, and I think the tiered rate that just went in, and I agree with you, I just got my new water meter and I'm getting an eyeful. So I do think we can continue to help people realize that some of the waste isn't necessarily affecting the quality of life and how to think about things differently. So education and incentives through rates as well.
Councilman Gambogi?
I'll tell you two stories I think apply. When I first got my rep assignment to Albuquerque, New Mexico, I had moved from the Midwest, where it was all green, and I had a rock front yard, and I said, I got to replace that rock yard. And they said, you're going to be traveling a lot. Why don't you give it six months? And six months later, that rock yard looked pretty good. About a half year ago, I was driving up Senator Highway, and I saw something I hadn't seen since I left Illinois, which was a truck full of rolls of sod. And someone had dug up the front yard, put a, not a drip sprinkler, but a spray sprinkler, and put down sod. I think that goes to point to two things. One, it's an adjustment when you move out of a green area to a place like Prescott. I like the green, but now I embrace the brown. And I think education can go a long way to help that. Not just education of how it looks, but education how it helps. And I think there's a lot of demand management that we can do, to Brian's point, more than we're doing today, and I think it would help everyone.
Yep. Mayor, do you have any other questions there, or should we move forward?
Well, not hearing any on the council, please proceed.
All righty. So I think this is self-explanatory. How would the council like to remain active? We would like to hear feedback and what that might look like.
Well, I think I mentioned before that I'd like to see a- I think I mentioned before that I'd like to see a periodic review after the plan has been crafted, and then be able to monitor our expectations in the short term to see how well we're doing. You know, if we're getting the kind of comments that Lois just mentioned, having her first smart meter and realizing, wow, I think I can do better there. I know I've been working with my landscapers over the last six months or so, looking at my drip irrigation system, and trying to identify leaks and breaks, and trimming it back, because I don't like to see those bills either. And I don't even have the smart meter yet. So I think having that kind of periodic review in the short term is very, very much needed. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess Brian alluded to this in the beginning, and I'm curious, like, if you guys have thoughts on this, as you develop the plan, coming back during that process and briefing council on portions that have been built out, or what you foresee for that, if you could answer that?
Well, we were looking at several different ideas, and we've looked at other communities as well. It seems like you should have a few regular workshops, so that when we hit, waiting till the end doesn't seem to make sense. We would like to have input along the way. If we can bring you a topic, you know, it wouldn't be the whole plan, it would be a portion of. We need to talk this through, see which way we're going. That would be helpful. Whether that happens through a council subcommittee as a focus topic one month, or maybe it's three times in 2025, that we take that time to do that discussion, that could be good. Smaller city manager, non-quorum discussions, if we send questions up and we can get some feedback, that could be helpful. Or we could do some other workshop kind of things. But it would be helpful to know, as we're starting this plan, where we need to put those markers in for council and for the public. And really, we can put the markers in, it's the level of interest, that activity that you're expecting to have with this plan. So that's what, I don't know if I quite answered the question, but right now, there are no markers for regular feedback from timely, important, you know, it's not just sit down, let's just talk about it. It's because we have a certain topic within the plan that should be discussed.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of gets to it, but not quite for me, I guess, to be honest. If you do it through, like, a water issue subcommittee, I think the challenge there is you're getting three people, not even really a majority at that point. And so that's, not that that works to a degree, but I think, in my experience, when I was on water issue subcommittee, sometimes there's agreement of the three people on that committee, and then it comes to council, and it's a different discussion that happens. So I guess I would envision some sort of regular briefing of, like, those topics as you work through them. So I don't know, chunky it out the way you're describing, like, a third, a third, a third, and a presentation similar to this would make sense to me. That's just my input.
That's very helpful. So we can run things up through the chain, where Gwen can deliver it to the city manager, and whatever those topics are, you know, the decision can be made. Is it a study session? Is it, you know, what is it that is convened? You know, it might be just written feedback, you know, just, here's a questionnaire, what do you guys think? And we're done on that topic.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
I had a little bit of a different point of view. If I look at the charter for WIS, for, you know, the purposes of strategic planning, it's definitely there on the charter. And so for me, I would consider that a decision-making group, or anything in that regard, but I would absolutely consider it a working group for you, because you can easily get on the agenda and bounce a couple of things, and at least get three council people's worth of opinion. That would help you get to the quarterly, or three times a year, be able to get before all of us. So this doesn't keep you stagnant waiting for answers. You could come and use WIS all the time. And we tend to have time on the agenda, so I don't know why we couldn't use that as a way of giving you some more timely perspective. Or you giving us perspective, let us think on it, we'll come back the next month and give you some thoughts, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Similar today, we're not trying to force information out of you, it's just to have this dialogue and start the process. I think there's many ways we can accomplish transferring information, thought processes. But we wanted some input. Mr. Dishlip actually has mentioned that, you know, just having, there should be some kind of contact between this working product of the city and the council, and whether that was an advisory person, or, and it wasn't to direct, you know, the study, it was to just have somebody in contact that can be like, oh, yeah, you know, this is what we're seeing. So it's really up to the city what makes best sense, and we can tailor it any which way. And we can throw you some ideas, too. So there was just two of them here. We can find something that works for everybody. I don't know if you had any more feedback on this one.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. As Chair of the Water Issue Subcommittee, I would like to say that this committee has been meeting every month, and we're already in place, and we're ready to work, take on this task. I'd like to comment that it's attended by the public, it's very transparent, whereas, you know, if it's work done in the city manager's office, that tends to be more administrative and less transparency. I'm not saying it's bad, but just kind of a different method. You know, I think we can do both, but I think that it's very important that we hash these things out at the Water Issue Subcommittee, and then we can move them on to the whole city council. Thank you.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Leslie, as we move through this, ultimately, I'd like to be able to see something like this on our city website. You know, for the standard homeowner, let's say, if they were interested in conservation, which is a major part of this, it'd be nice to be able to simplify it and give them some data that would be posted, you know, on a Facebook page, or on our city page, that they could refer back to, like, charts, for example. I know we have an incentive program right now for synthetic grass. I think, what is it, $2.50 a square foot, or something that we would be, or is it $1.50? Can't remember which. But to incentivize people to take out their turf and put in synthetic turf, stuff like that. And maybe have a chart so that anybody that was interested in looking at conservation would have real numbers dialed in. So, for example, if you have a square-footage, you know, 3,000 square foot of grass, this is what it's going to equate to savings in real dollars. So that it's not a guessing game for a lot of people that, you know, are interested in doing this, but just don't know where to start.
True.
So it might be good just to bring it down.
An interface on the web, on our webpage. And this could extend, the city has participate Prescott, you know, we could elicit quite a bit. And that's what I'm looking at, is different tools. So we can have regular, maybe, updates on the website about the long-term management plan. Maybe there's links for people to send us their feedback. We're kind of working that out today. Actually, that's the next slide, so maybe we're jumping ahead a little bit.
Oh, that's great. But one other thing, too, if you think about all the components in a person's home, that they could potentially conserve, I think laying it out in black and white for them, you know, for example, low-flow toilets, you know, a lot of the fixtures we have, if that could be simplified and posted there so that people can, again, understand the gains that they could realize, that'd be great.
Absolutely, because we do have preskettwater.com. We bought that years ago. It's dedicated to conservation. Tracy's here today, and she's working on amplifying what the city's already doing better, do it better and more. And so I think those comments are very helpful, and we're happy to do those kind of things. As I said, I think there's all ears on the audience right now, as well as me, about things that we can do through the website or otherwise, to really bring home a clear message to our public of what they can do to reduce their water use.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, I just want to say, Tracy's been coming to me for the last month or so, with a layout of a strategic messaging program, and putting messages out on a timely basis, when they make sense seasonally, or when they make sense when things occur. And now, a third point from you, just concise things that target people so that they can focus on what they can do. So we'll add that to the third kind of strategic planning for messaging, and we'll start working on that.
Now, when you think about every single component of a home, it's not that difficult to figure out the ways that you could conserve water. There's only so many. But again, if you can lay it out in terms of how much it's going to save you, you know, to the person that owns the home, in the real dollars, I think it's going to help incentivize a lot. Because a lot of people don't, you know, necessarily have the wherewithal to understand all that. But I think if it's there in black and white, something they can refer to, I think they'll be surprised how much they can save.
I think it's a good point. And those are, yeah, definitely outreach that makes sense. That's what you're looking for, is outreach that makes sense to the public, and easy. They have plenty of other things to worry about than calculate things themselves, we can just show them clearly. I'd move to the next slide, we're running up on 2 o'clock here almost. So our last question for the group was, you really had interest in having public participation as part of this process. There's many different ways we can do this, we don't have to choose one. But we were interested in some of your thoughts on how you would like the public to participate, or even regional partners, special interest groups.
Well, I know I, for one, really enjoyed the Water Smart programs we had over at the library for quite a few years. That's particularly valuable for new people that are coming into the community, trying to understand what's all this water management all about. And then to Mayor Protem's point, being able to get that education to them early on, so that they don't make investments like putting in turf, and then realize, boy, that was a bad mistake, cost me a lot of money, and now I'm paying for it in a much higher water bill, and all my neighbors are giving me the stink eye. So we don't want that to happen. But I think also, I think, I'm not sure if it's Unisource, or APS occasionally will send out in their bills, a kind of an analysis of your use, to see where you stand relative to other households that are of similar size. So sometimes you don't realize that, you think you're doing a good job, and when it's compared to maybe GPCD or other benchmark measures, that maybe you're not doing that good of a job. And then you are incentivized to look at additional savings in different areas. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I think, to Councilmember Rusing's point, if you do those kind of ad hoc updates to the Water Issue Subcommittee, that you'll have a way to engage the public there. I know, to her point, those meetings are fairly well-attended, and they tend to be well-covered by Citizens Water Advocacy Group, C-WAG, as well. And they have a pretty wide membership that they put things out to do. So they are a resource. That's the only other thing I would say, is including them in your thoughts as an advocacy group. Not that you have to create a committee, but that you have a local advocacy group here that is happy to broadcast out information pretty willingly.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I'd just like to add, you know, it's a misconception that zero escape has to be ugly, pile of rocks and dirt. It really isn't. So that's, you know, most of our potable water, a large percent of it, most of it is used for outdoor landscaping. So, you know, our goal is to decrease our outside watering. And maybe we can come up with some, you know, like, master gardener classes, partnership with the local nurseries, to let people know that zero escaping with pollinators and cactus can be actually very attractive. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's pretty much the last slide. It goes to questions after that. Just some, a couple parting things that I think are important. One is the flywheel effect. If we make some modest moves in the proper direction, we can build up momentum. And I think that's what we're hoping to do with this project. We won't have it all solved in one fell swoop, but we'll start building that momentum. The other one is the Stockdale paradox, and that's facing the unflinching reality of a circumstance. So it's not that we have, we know that water can be challenging in the desert, so we know that. But simultaneously, we can remain confident in an ultimate achievement. And so that's what I think we're working towards here, is we understand the ground rules of living in the desert, but we also are not afraid to move forward and find those achievements that we can make for this community. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments on any of the five discussion points or the outline, but we're happy to take them.
Are we going to have any public comment?
Would you not have any, Mayor?
Okay. Oh, very well. Thank you very much for the presentation. Oh, I think I see one coming up from the back there, kind of hidden by that holiday scarf.
Tom Rusing.
Well, first of all, I thank everyone, staff and council, for addressing this issue. I know, in my experience, into public water is probably the number-one concern. And certainly, in my readings and stuff, it's an issue not only in Arizona, but across the country and around the world. So I think we have to be really aggressive about how we deal with this. And I really appreciate the presentation today. A couple things. One is, Leslie mentioned adaptive management, and I wonder how that fits into the plan for reassessment at one year, five-year, 10, and all that. I mean, I think it's a wonderful concept, so we're not waiting too long to start making changes. Is that, do you already have a plan for adaptive management, or is it getting tweaked, like, with the comments today?
I think it's going to be tweaked with the comments today. We can read through our water and wastewater model and see how it was envisioned from an infrastructure standpoint. But I think the short answer to your question is that that's part of our work, is we're going to be looking at adaptive management. When do we see we need to adapt? Is it, are we adapting because it's gotten hotter, and we're going to adapt how we work with our customers to reduce water use? Are there lots of line breaks, and we need to adapt and figure out another method for handling those in a more timely fashion? Is there something entirely, well, I don't want to go into water quality, that gets long, but I hope that answers your question. We'll be working on it. It's not a set. We will adapt when this happens. That's what we'll be looking at.
Okay, thanks. It was addressed here already, and that's outside water use. I know we're members of C-WAG, and that's a frequent topic, significant of outside water use, because there's not really a way to reclaim that, whereas indoor water use is reclaimable. And so I think, one, there's a lot of good education that's already going on. I agree with the enhanced education. I guess one question I had is, what about enforcement? I know that's a difficult thing to deal with, but I see lots of homes going up that do not seem to be following the palette that I think the city has, and certainly C-WAG has put together. And since it's a significant water loss area, I'm just wondering, is there any, one, I would think that that would need to be considered. I'm not going to ask for a response now. The other, you talked about surveys. I know a lot of us in the public that are fairly active have been frustrated by some of the public outreach, where the presentations are limited, the surveys are leading questions, inadequate comparisons, and you feel really frustrated that you can't really give good feedback. And so that would be, my concern is that those kind of surveys are crafted well, and that the presentations allow the public to really participate as a group. I know in the previous water policy, they had presentations, and all it was, was going to tables and mingling around. And the public kind of revolted about that, and they said, we want to hear what other people in the public are saying. So there was question and answers to the experts from the city and outside. And then finally, I just want to say that C-WAG is a huge resource, I think, for the region and the community. And I know sometimes with previous councils, they were, they weren't appreciated. And I think they're a group of citizens that are knowledgeable, have no conflicts of interest, and are really looking out for the future of this region. And so I would encourage including them in participation, you know, during this whole process. Thank you.
Tony Hamer.
Mayor and council, Tony Hamer. Yeah, great. We've got a long-range water plan underway. I think that's wonderful. I think that's a tribute to you guys as well. As I was listening and learning, we certainly need to address the major nuts first. And I was surprised that nobody mentioned today big Chino pipelines. You know, surely that has to be a major piece of this plan as at least an insurance policy, but maybe as, more importantly, in times of stress, a major source of water supply as well. So that's an elephant in the roof that needs to be integrated into this plan. So I'm really pleased to see supply and demand coming to the forum. You know, we need to adopt a scenario planning approach when we take these major problems like this. We need to embrace the uncertainties and acknowledge the uncertainties all the way through. There isn't going to be a simple answer and one number at the end of the day. There's going to be a variety of probabilistic curves, and we need to be ahead of those curves with respect to the uncertainties. We need to estimate the ranges of uncertainties in each of the parameters involved here. So I would really urge us to take a probabilistic approach. It's more work, but it's going to give you a more realistic answer in terms of where we get to on a long-range plan. On the area of public involvement, I've got to agree with Tom here, you know, the more the better. Contest between neighborhoods, things like that, innovative approaches, in terms of involving from an action standpoint, as well as just from a verbal standpoint, the public will be important. Thank you.
Yvonne Dorman?
Mayor and council, thank you. My name is Yvonne Dorman. I live on Mullen Way. Since the last time I spoke with you, I believe Mayor asked there be a follow-up on the questions that I had. It started with me seeing a gentleman on Mullen Way who was making markings on the road, and he was in a City of Prescott truck. I asked him what he was doing, and he said, well, we're probably going to do this road next year. I said, what about fire hydrants? And he said, no, I don't know anything about fire hydrants. So when Mayor asked that this be followed up upon, it was. And I guess Gwen directed Carrie Opreheim to contact me, and she did. She was very pleasant, and she said, can a few of you get together with a few people from the city? And I said, for what reason? And she said, well, we can talk about this. I said, we have done that three or four times, maybe five times, maybe more than that with individual people. And I talked to my neighbors, it was close to Thanksgiving, people were out of town, people weren't interested because they thought we had been used just to get the big tank on the top of the hill so that it could be part of the spokes. People said, that'll never happen. People said, they've just used it, why don't you just quit? They're never going to help us. So, I don't know if you are or not. I happened to come across an old calendar. My husband and I worked at Phoenix Children's Hospital until about 1997, and we moved here in April. This calendar, I guess when I started all this, is a little calendar before I had a computer. It's 1997, September 11th, Annex Meeting with the City, 1997. I think that was before Sam Steiger was even mayor here. Since then, we have gone through numerous question-and-answer periods. We would still like to know if you expect us to vote as citizens, or do we have any rights as citizens? I mean, should there be fire hydrants every 500 feet, every 300 feet, whatever the rule is? Because we are people who are in the City of Prescott. Have you asked, instead of asking utilities, have you asked, like, Fire Chief of Prescott, KAFMA, Forest Service Chief, those kinds of people, what they think? We know what two of them think because they have said so. It's a dangerous area, I will never send my men in there, that kind of stuff, which doesn't make us feel very comfortable, especially when you look at that road now. At the top of that road, it is so dry, the very top of that road, there are like eight dead trees, and the man is even older than I am, and I'm 82. And he, he's not going to cut him down, apparently. I mean, what are our rights? I mean, we don't know. You know, we've talked to people individually on the staff, we've talked to people in groups, we've talked to other council members. We don't know what to ask you anymore. We would like to know if you're going to help us ever. Gwen did say to me prior to that last meeting, very briefly, like, one minute before she needed to speak, she said, you don't realize how difficult this will be. You don't realize how difficult this has been since 1997, and getting people together at my home, their homes, we're good neighbors to each other, but people's insurance is being canceled? That's crazy. I mean, we're hoping that you'll think about this again, and if somewhere, it'll be put into water. I mean, that Mullen Way is a 50 or 60-foot easement. You're welcome to use my part of the easement. You're welcome, I mean, you know, and on the other side of the street. We need water up there, fire hydrants or in individual homes. The last person who contacted me from the city about what was put into the budget wanted two assessments on my property because I'm on two acres. Well, I had to come into the city as two acres, because that's the rule. When we tried to get out of the city, I was told, no, you can't get out of the city. Once you're in, you're in. He said, but we could go with the county. No, you can't, you got to stay where you are. So, do we matter? Do we matter as much as the new people coming into the city? I mean, there are people who aren't even here yet. Do they matter more than we do? Most of us, you know, have worked hard our lives, we're professional people, we're honest people. We would like some kind of response from the city, if someone is willing to do that. Thank you. And I do appreciate that you listen to me.
That's all, Mayor.
I think that concludes our study session for today. It's 2:15, so please enjoy the 45 minutes until our voting meeting. It's 3:00. This meeting is adjourned.